Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, October 10th, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. We are meeting tonight at 323 Bedford Street at the Police Station Meeting Room. We do have a quorum this evening with Dan Woga, John Cabral, David Lodge, myself, Michelle McEckern, Clerk Kathy Murray. We have Town Council Amy Questle with us as well as
Jack Dowd.
Jack Dowdy here tonight. We have Lake Cam recording. Is anyone else recording for the record? Hearing none. We have the first item on our agenda, which is a public hearing for Pinecrest Village, which has been continued to tonight upon the application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. for a two-lot subdivision off Hickory Lane and Pinecrest Drive. Assessor map 043, block 007, lot 001, possible vote.
How you doing?
Hi.
Jason York was from Outback Engineering, here with Greg Maroni, the applicant, and his attorney. So this is a, I'm just getting my stuff out here. This was a public hearing that had been going on for a little bit, and it was continued from the last hearing as we were going to finalize some revisions from the consultant, which we've done, minor revisions. And then we also met with Deputy Chief Garland from the Fire Department about what concerns they had. So we've incorporated their changes as well into the design. You know, the most, biggest one being the houses will have residential sprinkler systems to protect the houses and the residents. That was one of their big requests. So that has been noted on the plans that the houses will be, have those. We've shown all the turning radii movements around the cul-de-sacs. The pavement width for the cul-de-sac was increased. It's actually a 21-foot wide pavement, which is adequate for their largest truck, the tower truck. She, Deputy Chief Garland, had given me their turning radii, which had matched up with what we had. There was also a concern down where Hickory Lane takes the big 90-degree corner along the Beechtree. That was, they had been stuck there previously. So we have shown on the plans to improve that bend by anchoring the shoulder with gravel, taking out any unsuitable material needed, gravel. So they have the ability to have their tires go off the road if they need to there. And we've also done their turning radii for their truck on that as well. And I also know one of the homeowners association had requested a steel plate over the culvert on Beechtree Lanes. We had shown that on the plan as well to protect that culvert during, just during the construction process to make sure that that was not impacted. And again, we made some minor revisions for, that were still lingering with the review engineer. They were just minor text things, no in-depth drainage or anything like that. We met with Conservation on Tuesday and finished that up with them on Tuesday. That's kind of where we're at. I don't know if the board had any other additional questions.
So, did you see the email from, and just for the record, it's Deputy Chief Garland. Did you see her email? She did send a follow-up.
I have not.
Okay. So, I can read that. It's dated October 8th. This document has been submitted as an updated comment on the proposed residential building project located at Pinecrest Village. These comments supplement the March 25th, 2024 memo previously sent. First, I'd like to confirm the dimensions of the roadway. I did not see that noted in the Outback Engineering Review response. The response waiver comments proposed 120-foot diameter turnaround. A cul-de-sac at 120 feet should be marked "Fire Lane" to prevent illegally parked vehicles in the cul-de-sac so as to allow the fire trucks to turn around. Approved, no parking. Fire lane signs should be provided along the curbs where parking could obstruct the minimum width and turning radius or access. If 140 foot could be done, then consider not marking its fire lane. Also, if the turnaround is allowed to be 120 feet, consider eliminating the cul-de-sac island. The cul-de-sac island interferes with the ability of large apparatus to turn around. Another feature will be trees planted in the cul-de-sac island. Trees grow out over the roadway and can obstruct or damage fire trucks. Unobstructed vertical clearance of 13.6 feet should be maintained at all times. Consider the same tree issue depending how close to the street-side trees are planted. Lastly, I would suggest acceptance of the sprinkler system to be directly connected to the conditions of the occupancy permit inspection. So I think Kathy just handed you a copy of that.
You want this copy?
No, I think the thing she said, not, you know, anything crazy.
And I know she said that she was questioning the dimensions of the roadway. I did ask Kathy to forward her a couple pages from the plans as well as the first few pages of your comments back. So that that was hopefully understood. I was hoping to speak with her, but I didn't get around to speaking with her today, so.
So again, on sheet nine, we've gone through and done the turning radius, radii for the fire truck to make sure that that would work. But if the board wants to eliminate the center island in the cul-de-sac just to make it easier for everybody, that's fine by us. That's not an issue. I know at least the Middleborough, they prefer not to have it just because the plows have issues with it. But again, it's in the regs. But you know, we can definitely remove that. That would not be a problem. Or if, you know, no parking signs, that's, you know, that's also not a problem.
Okay. So at this point, does the board have any specific questions? Did you want to look at these, the comments and the waivers that are requested and just go over those?
Yeah, let me go over the waivers.
Okay, so looking at the letter dated September 23rd, 2024, with the waiver comments. Number one refers to the right-of-way minimum of 50 feet. The applicant is requesting a 40-foot right-of-way for a two-lot subdivision. And our peer review said we reiterate the intent of our previous comment, continue to take, except, to not take exception to the waiver being requested from a technical standpoint. So.
Not just says it coordinate, not coordinate, but align better with the existing 40-foot right-of-ways that are out there instead of having 10-foot jogs, which can have their own issues.
So, I mean, so my main concern is the existing width of the road leading up to it because we know that there was an issue. It's not just a possibility. It has happened. There was a fire. There was a need for emergency vehicles. Someone did get stuck in the mud. I believe it was a Middleborough tanker truck. We know those are very heavy. My concern is, I think it's great that you're adding that turning radius. I just, I worry that that, the gravel, I don't know if the gravel is going to be sufficient for, you know, a large water truck, especially.
Yeah, so we have that going down in compacted layers. We're not just putting gravel on side road. They're going to take out soft soil underneath it, down to your hardpan. There's hard soil out there anyways. And then bringing that back in in compacted layers as it would be for a regular roadway. So the entire sub-base that you would have for a regular paved roadway is going to be where that widened road is at the bend. The only thing, we're just not paving it. So it's going to be able to support any truck that would, that would use that to make that curve a little bit easier. The only thing was just not paving it. That detail is on sheet nine. That goes, that shows that, that it's just not piling some dirt alongside the road. We're actually making a road base that could be utilized.
So in the first letter from Deputy Chief back March 25th, she did note the different codes and the second-to-the-last one, surface. Fire Department access road shall be designed and maintained to support the imposed loads of fire apparatus and shall be provided with an all-weather driving surface.
Which that would be.
So who's going to maintain that if it's outside of, you know, the cul-de-sac?
Part of the entire roadway system going down there. Their road's too small in that spot.
So, I know we talked about previously. Right. So, well, we talked about previously how the road build-out was up to 24 feet, I believe, instead of this 20 feet. So, how does this board feel about adding that as a condition? Are you satisfied with the 20 feet? Do you think that it should be part of a condition to address the existing road layout, to make adequate access? Because.
Yeah, but it's so far, it's so far down. It's, you know, it's three-quarters of a mile or more than, you're looking at a mile down there.
It's already far exceeding the 750-foot cul-de-sac road length. And we also know that when the fire apparatus was in the road, it blocked access to the rest of the road.
Well, that's because there was a fire going on in the house right there. So they, they blocked the road.
Well, just their vehicles being in the road blocks it.
So most of that road coming all the way down, it's not, you know, too narrow for cars. It's, you're going down Robbins Lane is plenty wide. Mark Twain, Hickory Lane, those are all. So we went out there with Deputy Chief. It was just that bend that they had issues with. That's why we were improving that bend.
But what about the road's surface, though?
If you prefer that.
Because, you know, they're not responsible for maintenance on a good portion of that. You know, there's a kind of a sticking point of how do you?
It appears that what they're proposing would need maintenance. Right, to keep it clear for many.
What type of maintenance are you talking about? It's just part of the road?
You're proposing gravel, correct?
Yes, but we can pave it if the board would rather that part of it paved, sure.
I think pavement would be better than the gravel, because the gravel will need maintenance.
We could propose that to be paved, not a problem.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I'd accept a 20-foot road that was paved over 24-foot gravel road. You know, it'd be nice to have both, certainly.
Well, I think that's the question is, do we condition that the road be built up to that 24 or approve it as the 20 existing?
You're talking about the mile of roadway to get out there?
Student, I wanted to be Pinecrest Drive. What you guys are talking about is that the bend where Beechtree stands, correct?
Correct.
Well, being a private roadway, doesn't the association have to approve anything? Because we own the road and the town doesn't? Nobody, they don't own the road, so everybody down there owns it? So the association won't have to be involved as to what's going to be done to that road? Because it's already an issue down there. Am I right or wrong?
Can you remind me again how many associations are involved?
There's only two.
Two?
There's the original association and then the new part, which is from the top of Robbins down.
Robbins down?
Correct. Because I just can't see, I mean, the town doesn't maintain the road. But doing it to us with a private roadway, so how can someone else come in and make changes to a road that the association owns and it's a private way? And it's going to affect two, no, three houses at least there at that corner.
So if it's a, if it's a private way, I'm assuming that the applicant has rights to that private way? And therefore, the applicant. Well, if the applicant has rights to that private way, they are allowed to improve it provided that they do not hinder anyone else's rights to that way. So by improving it, they can improve it. They can't block it. They cannot place a shed on it or anything like that. But they are able to improve it. But there would have to be some kind of, they would have to have some kind of rights in their deed to be able to, to do that.
Madam Chair, if I could address that. Daniel Dr., I represent the applicant. I actually have a letter to the town, to Town Council. That writes to a way, you just have to have ownership along its length at the time that it was laid out.
When did you send a letter to me? I didn't get it.
I sent it to the board and.
I'd say it was probably at least a month ago, huh? Oh, but it wasn't, it wasn't directed to me?
No.
Okay, great, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, okay?
So, these lots are all part of the same subdivision and, and there's a, there's a meaning to how the, how the plan was originally done. I mean, engineers are pretty smart. And one of the things they do is they'll often, they'll often, when they have a road meeting lots that are, that they're, land they're not necessarily intending to develop at that point, is they'll actually make the road go beyond the lot. Because the owner at the end of a road, the end, at the very end, is not in a butter. So they'll make the road extend beyond it to actually give it distance along its length. And along the length makes you in a butter. So you have rights to the road unless somebody terminates your rights. The road can be conveyed over and over, but everyone who is in a butter to that way has rights to the way. And then by statute, has the right to make improvements. They could run utilities. They could do a whole bunch of things by virtue of that. And that's all statutory. And my, my letter to the board, which I sent to address this, included the references to the, to the plans, addresses that specifically. So I get it, there's an HOA that ultimately the developer conveyed the way to the HOA. I get that, but they didn't convey it, terminate the rights of people who had rights to the road. They just conveyed their interest, whatever interest they had. I'm not, I'm not interested in debating it with everyone that's here. But that's why I put it in writing. You had asked for it and I had provided it. And, but that's the answer on that question, in my opinion.
So you're, so Amy, so they would have to show that they do have those rights or?
Yep, yep. So most likely with regard to older subdivisions, the overall older subdivision of this area, most likely they have, they have rights to, to the road. To, they probably have rights to all of the roads in the subdivisions, in the subdivision. I just don't know that for certain. But it's highly likely that they do. And I do agree that they can improve it in any way that, that does not hinder other people's access. So they can run utilities, they can pave it. They just cannot, like I said, block it or do anything like that.
Did, if you'd like, say your name?
Melissa McDermott, One Beechtree Drive. I'm actually the direct authority to this proposed turnaround. And the parcel that they're talking about extending or improving is actually also a drainage area. We have underground pipe there that takes the water that's running down the hill over to the wetland behind it. So you're talking about a wetland area, drainage that if blocked or covered could potentially flood my yard even more than it already does from the newer houses that are there. And I believe the deeds and the way they're written, that the use of the roads, Robbins Lane, Hickory Lane, and Beechtree Drive, specifically say access to their property using those roads. There's no mention of maintenance or improvements. The HOA technically owns that parcel of, of the road itself and is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that road. So even if there was some kind of improvement made to that road, who would be responsible for maintaining it, paying for it? That would fall on the association then. So I have some concerns about that as well.
So just to be clear, I mean, they'd only be working within their own property limits?
No, this is talking about in front of my house. This is like a half a mile from where the proposed houses are.
So we did have a full peer review that looked at drainage?
For the, for the fire turnaround? For the fire extension?
No. So you're talking about just, just for the area paving?
I'm talking about where.
Proposed.
Proposed.
Okay, so you said turnaround. So you don't mean the turnaround, you mean?
I mean, the extension of that turn where the fire truck got caught last year. Hickory and Beechtree is definitely drainage. And it is definitely wet and there's definitely concern there on a lot of people's.
No, you've been to Conservation?
Yes.
On the fire road?
We were on Conservation on Tuesday. We're all done with Conservation.
This issue wasn't raised at Conservation?
We talked about it on Tuesday. So we're not talking about doing a turnaround or anything like that. We're just making the road a couple feet wider so the truck can turn around the corner.
Are you aware of the drainage that she's?
Yes, it's farther over. We're not impacting it.
All right, I'm Greg Maroni, the owner.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? A clarifying question. So I'm confused because Hickory, Hickory and Cedarwood have an almost identical turn than Hickory and, and then there's so on. If you go to plan, if you go to sheet, if you can go to sheet, sorry, sheet six.
Cedarwood's a paper road.
That's the paper road.
Okay, so where would, so where is, where is Beechwood? Is there a, is there a Beechtree? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
So that's the actual access to this proposed.
So is there an overall plan so we can see how far away this curve is from the?
So here's our proposed. This is Pinecrest. This is Beechtree.
And is Cedar the one, the one closer to you?
So the bend right here in the road is really tight going around that corner. So they needed it a couple feet wider.
Going towards you, that's that one.
That's a paper road?
So that doesn't come into play, correct?
Those requested to be noted on the plans, paper, as a paper road, which we did.
So we don't have to worry about that curve because nobody takes that one?
No, that goes down into the wetlands.
So that one, that one, nope, the one that I was just talking about, sorry. That one has wetlands?
This is all wet through here.
Yeah, that's all wetlands. So does, does the Beechtree, is it Beechtree? Does that one have wetlands?
No, these are all houses on here. They have a frog pond right here with a culvert that goes underneath to Long Pond, and that's where they wanted the steel plate.
Okay, because sheet nine doesn't seem to show any, it doesn't seem to show any wetlands. So why did, did you go, did you have to go to Conservation for?
We went for Conservation for the whole thing.
For the uptown?
Everything, yeah.
Everything, but is?
There's no wetlands down there.
Yeah, so is that curve in the jurisdiction of the commission, do you think?
No.
Okay. Because I don't, you, on sheet nine, I don't see any bordering vegetated wetlands or any buffer zones to bordering vegetated wetlands. So that's why I was confused. That clears a lot up for me.
There was no work proposed at that curve before this latest revision. So there wouldn't have been any reason to spore whatever was wet. I'm sorry. Alan Milk, your for Pinecrest. So the plans didn't incorporate any work down at the curve of Beechtree and Hickory?
Not even the gravel?
No, that came up in the effort to satisfy the Fire Department. So it's unclear whether that would fall.
Understood, thank you.
Excuse me. The reason we're doing all this improvement is because the Fire Department requested. So why is everybody fighting to fix the road? I thought they were worried about their properties being burned down and the fire truck not being able to go down there. We're improving it, we're widening it, we're making the corner. She was fine with it, the deputy. She came out there, she walked the lot, no one else showed up. And we're willing to fix it and approve it. And then we're adding a cul-de-sac at the end so the fire truck can turn around now. Before, now it's like, goes down there, it can't turn around. Now we're fixing all these problems for the Fire Department. And now all of a sudden, everybody's got a problem. You should be calling the Fire Department.
I did speak, I have spoken to the Deputy Chief. And she did say that there was a concern about her that came out, was actually very livid.
Yeah, he's always like that.
So, so it wasn't just her, you know, there was someone else that showed up and was, you know, unhappy with us. The problem is you're adding on to an existing already, you know.
We're improving.
The problem is if you can not access that turnaround, what's the good of, in, you can't call it an improvement if you can't access the turnaround. So that is my concern that in an emergency situation where it's already happened, it's not just hypothetical. You do have to provide adequate emergency access. And if, if a fire apparatus were to block the road, my concern, and that's what my question to this board is, are we willing to waive the width of the road requirement because?
Well, how wide is the road right now? That you're, that, how wide are the roads?
That we're building?
Yes.
We put it at 21.
And that's just for the cul-de-sac?
Just for the cul-de-sac.
And then how wide are the roads? So then the other roads are varying, right?
They vary.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know. Like, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a existing road. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to do. So I guess if they have the concern with them adding to a corner, there's no way they're going to be able to add all the way up and varying 20 feet all the way up in a road that's existing. So I don't, I don't, I don't see what the issue is to get down, in my personal opinion. If we, if they're.
So are you, are you saying?
I'm fine with the 20 feet.
You're okay with the 20 feet? What about this gravel or paved turning radius?
Well, again, I don't know. It's, it's kind of what the Fire Department's asking for. And I think they're trying to meet that. So I'm just trying to see what, I understand the residences issue with it as it's their road that they're widening, but I don't know. I don't see where, and I guess we're going back and forth. We've asked them to do it, they've done it, and then now we're telling them they can't do it. So I don't, I'm just trying to see what we're doing here. We're going circular, is what it seems like to me.
Right, well, I mean, it sounds like from what Town Council has said, they are within their rights to potentially include this widening. Correct, but we're talking about Pinecrest.
Correct.
Correct? And so the waiver is for Pinecrest Drive. And so what, what sheet shows that it's a 21-foot improved road? Because it's 40, it's a 40-foot layout, correct?
Right. So the detail, the roadway detail, it's listed on the grading sheets. It's on all of them. I suppose if it's that much for concern, we could, well, if we're going to take out the island, it really wouldn't matter, but.
So the waiver is only for Pine, for Pinecrest? And then going back to the fire access paving, that would be a separate, that would be a condition? That really wouldn't be a waiver? Because there's no requirement for them to do that in your, in your subdivision rules and regulations. So that would just be a condition of your subdivision approval? That they have to pave that, that curve? As shown on, as shown on sheet nine? That, that's how you could refer to it? Although you would have to, you would have to modify what, your detail plan? That shows gravel? Is that what you would modify?
We would just have to show that there's pavement being on top of that.
So would you, would you need to, would you need to modify the plan?
I don't think so, because we already have a pavement detail on there.
Okay, so it could be a condition then? Without, without you having to modify the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So going back to your original question is, the waiver that they're looking for is for, is for Pine, is for Pinecrest only?
And then would they need a waiver to remove the circle? Because it's in our regulations, right?
We would if there's, if, if that's the direction the board wants to go. We've already made it wide enough for the trucks to get around. And the street trees are not near the edge with that impact. So that the radii, everything works for fire trucks to easily be able to turn around.
Is there a way to limit the tree? You said street trees. Can you, can you choose a variety that won't?
It doesn't.
Yeah, street trees that are all.
Horizontally?
Yeah, the street trees that typically get put in don't have big canopies. It's not a big.
But if we were to go without the cul-de-sac? They would need a waiver, because it is in your regulations. Okay. I mean, I'd be more inclined to grant that waiver because it's requested by the Fire Department. Do you have a provision that the waiver has to be in writing? Or can he ask for a verbal waiver tonight? I don't know.
I don't think it's in writing. I don't, there's nothing that says it has to be in writing.
Is that 100, that's 120-foot circle right now?
I think they do have to provide a list.
The property line, yeah.
Yeah, usually you have to provide a list.
Yeah, I think.
Do you plan on, do you plan on closing this tonight?
Um.
Please.
If, if the board is in agreement. Yeah.
Um, then, because I think you do have to put it in writing. You do have to put, you have to, you have to give a list of waivers.
Right.
So you have to change the plan anyway because the waivers have to be on the plan.
Yep, they're on the plan, but we'd have to add that one.
You'd have to add that one.
To remove the, the, the Rhode Island and the uh trees along with it, obviously, right? Because I'd have to get that waiver. And the conditions would be like the signs, right? The no parking signs and stuff like that. Without your condition?
Back and forthy conditioned, yes. Yes. Unless your regulations require it, but I don't think they, I don't know. Yeah, okay.
All right, so going back to the waiver comments, um, item number two has to do with the twenty-foot width, um, which now they're, they're going up to twenty-one foot.
It was twenty-one.
I think they also asked you to put the, the sprinkler system in, right? In lieu of, without the turnaround, right? Yeah, with the cul-de-sac itself. But you guys still putting the sprinkler systems in regardless?
Sprinklers, yeah, that was a request when we met.
And that has been noted on the plans, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the plans.
There is a note on the plans, but you, you could put it as a condition of granting the waiver.
Okay.
Number ten, general notes.
What'd you say?
Yeah, it was number ten on the general notes.
Okay. So number three uh from Bill and Thomas has noted the roadway network prior to subdivision noncompliant. The fact the subdivision is attempting to be more compliant, twenty-foot versus the twenty-four-foot width appears to be moved. We continue to defer to the board on the appropriateness of the waiver being requested. So that's still, again, the same, looking for twenty-one feet from the twenty-four feet.
Yeah.
Uh, number four uh refers to the sidewalks, which I believe we've already discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Potentially granting that waiver because there's no existing sidewalks and there is that school bus waiting area at the head of the street. And so the existing turnaround that's shown, that's the hundred and twenty feet, correct?
Yes. So to clarify, on the roadway, there's twenty-one feet through here to make the truck work, but it's only twenty through here.
Okay.
Um, just to make it tie in better with the existing road.
Okay, so the cul-de-sac is, or the, the circle is twenty-one.
For the fire truck. The rest was twenty.
But it won't be because you're getting rid of the island?
So it'll be, yeah.
So it'll be?
It'll be whatever.
Yeah, park along.
If you want to get rid of the island. It works with it, but if you want to get rid of the island. I do believe in her letter, she's, uh deputy chief said.
If you wanted one forty if, if the island was there.
To put uh.
No parking.
No parking signs.
Yeah.
Um, if it stays the way it is, but if, no parking signs aren't needed if the island's gone. It all depends on what the board wants.
Looking at your, your drawing there, it's, they have to be pretty good not to uh, not to run over. I don't know, maybe I.
I'd still want to see because if there's cars parked there and they need that full diameter.
That's why she requested the no parking.
Yeah, so I, I'd, I'd still want to see the no parking.
Yep.
For the turnaround.
Well, she said, she said no parking unless they went to a hundred and forty feet.
Right, and that's what the waiver they're looking for, from the one forty down to the one twenty. So we would need.
Could never have the island.
The waiver for the island to be removed.
Unless we kept it. That's, that's up to you guys. I don't know what, how, how you feel.
I have no opinion on it.
I mean, to me, if the, you know, if it makes it easier for the fire department to maneuver so they don't have to worry about going over the island, making a turn.
And for plowing.
It makes sense to remove it.
Okay.
And then also include the no parking.
Okay.
Sure.
I believe that is all of the waiver comments.
No, there was one more.
What was that?
Sidewalks, number four.
Oh, wait, the sidewalks is the one that I think we were already in agreement.
Yeah.
Of waving that one.
Sidewalks.
For two houses.
Oh, you know, I did have a question on the um, the grading. Because there was a comment about the steepness of the driveway on.
Yep, that was revised. So we adjusted the grading for lot two driveway.
So looking at this, it's going down the driveway for lot two. That's not ninety-eight, that's eighty-six. Okay, right?
Yep, it's this.
I just wanted to make sure it's not.
Oh, wait, yeah.
Right, because it looked ninety-eight, but then the other, the eighty-four and eighty-two are going the other direction. So I just wanted to confirm, is it eighty-six?
Eighty-six is going down.
Yeah. Yeah, we adjusted that slope in the grading for that lot. And again, all that grading gets fine tuned uh on the board of health plan. When the exact house is, that they decide to put there and all that grading, septic design gets fine tuned.
Now, are you able to add, instead of putting the trees on the island, are you able to add those trees over? I know you said you don't want it on the septic area, but can you put it in between the road and um for lot two? Can you move those trees?
Well, there's a lot of existing vegetation that's not going to be impacted, so that's why there's no street trees there.
But what about in front of the house?
So this is, well, that's where the septic is, though.
So there's no, no room?
Too close, enough too close.
I mean, over in lot one.
Down here, down by the basin, and then this is all existing vegetation.
And unless we keep the, the island in there.
And you got this area on lot one.
Yeah.
Well, they have the trees here.
Yeah. But you could just add those three in there unless they wanted that open space.
My only, I mean, they have them in front of lot one. I just wanted.
Yeah.
Didn't figure to add some in front of lot two as well to make it more of a screen.
Kind of in the corner of the driveway there. But it didn't necessarily impact septic. Yeah, right in there. At least get one of them in there.
Did you, does anyone, does anyone agree? Do you want to see those trees moved? Are you okay with just taking them out or?
I don't know whether to put them though, it's the only thing.
Okay. And what about in the corner there on?
Yeah, as you go in the driveway on lot two, yeah, just in the corner of the driveway, right there, yeah. At least take, take one of those trees and put it there.
It's gonna, I don't know, it will be too close to the, the reserve, I don't know.
Yeah.
No, it should be fine.
And then what about right above R equals fifty-one? See it on lot two?
Oh, yeah.
There's an area right there you could put a tree.
Well, that's where we have the existing trees, though.
No, uh, go a little bit more towards you. Yeah, yeah, right there.
That's our septic, that's gonna be too close.
It's too close.
Yeah, we're gonna get roots.
Why would it be too close there and not too close where?
Yellow one's a reserve, so, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if the tree goes, the tree will have to be removed if they have to replace their septic.
But isn't that where you're proposing a tree on lot one at the corner of the driveway?
There's room right there, up against the, the driveway there. There's enough room. To do it on this one, I mean, you're already, you're right next to the trees that are already there.
Oh, I see what you're saying because there's already trees.
Yeah, yeah, trees, new street trees do not do well on the bigger trees. They end up dying because they don't get any sun.
So you still have to go through board of health as well?
That's much later down the road.
So I'd like, I'd like to see a condition. I know Kathy, we'd had um first site plan. We'd added um some word, wording that said, you know. If you could add, if you could add that uh saying that if, if.
Something, a major comes back to that, yeah.
If any changes.
We have that note on our plan already.
Okay.
About uh, these are conceptual in nature uh and any changes when the septic design's done has to, if they're alter the drainage patterns and collect system, we have to come back before the board.
Okay. That's, that's good, but if, if we could just add it in, because we'd added some standard language to the site plan conditions, I think it'd be good just to make sure that we cover that base. Um, and there were no changes uh from conservation?
Yep.
And then I know um for number twenty-four, here you had said to make sure that um the SWIP is added.
Yep, so that's done prior to construction, but after approvals. We want to make sure our SWIP relates to a finalized plan.
Okay, so as long as we have a fully compliant SWIP prior to commencement of construction?
Yep.
Have that added as a?
It's also in the order of conditions from CONCON.
Oh, they do have it. Okay, good.
We include everything that's required on the SWIP on our plans, but it's just the application and the, and the paperwork itself that gets done afterwards.
Okay, and then uh council, um, is there anything that, in regards to this radius, this added radius? Is there any verbiage that should be added to make sure that there is no interference with some drainage or wetlands?
Um, with wetlands, no, you don't have to put anything because again, that would be under the conservation commission. So if they are proposing to pave and they are within a hundred feet of any wetlands, they have to go to cons, they have to go to CONCON.
Okay.
Um, and then again, I, I would say that if for some reason this pavement does affect somebody's, does affect the water flow onto somebody else's property, that is private matter. So they would, they would have to answer to that a butter.
Okay. So add a, as in condition or no?
There, there's really nothing we could add.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then uh we'd also talked about adding a condition, um, if there is any damages caused to the existing roadway uh that they would be responsible.
During construction, correct.
Okay, so add a condition?
Yeah.
To that effect as well?
Yep.
Any damages?
And then um, I don't know, when would you want to have the steel plate removed? Like that certificate of occupancy? Because they're proposing it's only for construction and sometimes there's a problem with when they think construction is over and when others think. It should, there should be a firm benchmark. So usually it would be upon the certificate of occupancy for both lots.
Okay.
And have we seen an HOA agreement yet?
For the two houses?
Yeah.
Um, not yet. That would be something that would be put together later.
Okay, because I know we've, in the past, we've had council review it um and included it. So um, add, is that in? Is the condition?
It wasn't.
I think it is. Yeah, I think there's some language. So, so Kathy can revise the conditions? Put it together, send it out?
Yep.
And have council review?
Yep.
Okay.
No problem.
So at this point, should we close the hearing?
Unless you have public comment, I don't know.
Is there any more public um comments, questions, concerns at this time?
Question, I just want to clarify on the drainage. So if there's an existing drainage system where the road is going to be widened at the curve, um, is there any, any way of essentially saying that, that construction has to be done in a way that maintains the effectiveness of that existing drainage system? As opposed to waiting for the water to back up on the neighbor's yard?
Is it being widened?
Down at the corner of?
Where that sharp bend is, they're, yeah, they're widening a little bit, a couple of feet.
You're digging into the brush and possibly into somebody's front yard.
There's no brush there. It's, it's the shoulder of the road. You can see where the tire trucks, where they got stuck. It's just gonna make that so they don't get stuck in it.
It says on the plan, on sheet nine, it says Hickory Lane, forty, private forty feet, existing paved road, correct? And then it looks like. So, so the, the black outline is what you're, is what's going to be paved or is it the red? The red is the fi, the truck turning?
Red's the fire truck.
The red's the fire truck. What's the green?
Uh, that's the overhanded fire truck.
Okay, so it's, it's the black, so you are, you're coming out this way with the road, right?
A little bit.
So it's actually on the opposite side from Ms. McNermitz?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's, it's like. Ten feet away from my yard.
Yeah, it's on the outside.
So it's on the opposite side of the road from you?
Yes, yes.
So that's where you're saying though is the drainage?
But there is a drain. There's a drain that diverts the water from the road um down the side of the road instead of into my yard, across the street.
Is that correct? There's a drain or is it a swale? What is?
There's a drain on the inside.
There's a drain on the, in the, between the woods and the paved part of the road. There's a drain and a pipe underneath, which is we have to maintain and clear out regularly to keep the flow of water going.
Yep, so any pipe underneath wouldn't be impacted.
I would agree that it wouldn't.
Okay.
Wouldn't be impacted.
A, a pipe wouldn't be, if it's underneath.
If there was.
The pipe would not be.
They're gonna be digging down to.
And they're not, but you're not going to, you're not going to impact the pipe that's there, correct?
No, no. It's underneath the ground.
And if it was to become blocked, would we have access to that pipe if there was pavement over it?
Same as you would if it wasn't.
I just have some real concerns about making decisions about something that could impact um the whole neighborhood.
Again, and I, and I apologize for not knowing all of this, but it says existing paved road.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's already paved.
It's not wide enough for the fire trucks to get around.
Right, so it's already paved and they're just adding, they're adding, you know.
To the inside.
They're adding more pavement to make it wider. They're not taking a dirt road and making it paved.
Correct.
So.
The drainage is exact, is right next to the pavement.
It's already underground a paved road. Correct? It's already under a paved road?
No, it's next to a paved road.
Underground.
Okay.
If it crosses over, it's underneath it.
And then you're gonna pave over it. What's existing there now that's not paved?
Right, a little bit. So the fire truck can turn.
Just on the bend. So will you come in contact with the drainage pipe underneath?
I think it's farther over because we're only doing a little bit.
Okay.
But you know, obviously, it's when we dig near a road, you dig carefully.
Right.
And if you see a pipe, then you don't dig it. And obviously, you had in your condition earlier about anything that was impacted during construction would have to be the responsibility of the applicant to, to fix.
So if they have to extend the pipe, they'll have to extend the pipe as part of the pavement?
Right.
Correct.
And when the pavement actually protects the pipe?
More so than a.
And, and just to clarify, that pipe is not just solely where that extension would have to be. So it's also um a bus, um a neighbor across the street's property and then comes down. So there would not be pavement over the entire pipe.
Right.
So that, now you're talking about just a portion of it under the pavement. And how do you maintain and when leaves and debris go in there from, I'm just. I think that this needs to be addressed with the abutters and the people that it impacts and know it's a small portion of this whole plan, but it's something that just came up this week and we haven't even been notified about this possibility. There's more to it than just throwing some pavement on a corner. Including that wetlands I mentioned earlier, that has not been surveyed for wetland as a part of this plan because it's not merely um development itself.
So like town council had said, if there's wetlands in that area, they would have to file with conservation to do any work within wetlands.
Including that extension for the fire department.
Correct.
Because I, I, the association would of course want to work with the fire department to make those improvements as they see fit anyway, but that should just be come in and do it without our notification or, or.
Well, I mean, as far as public hearing process, it's not, it's not that it's, it's not something that's, you know, trying to sneak in.
No, it would be appreciated if it could be a um. I'm sorry, I'm losing the condition, thank you, of the approval by this board, I, I just, I would appreciate that as a.
So we are, we are adding that condition as it's been said, that if there's any further dam, any damage done will be their responsibility.
Damage during construction.
During construction.
That's, no, that's something different, though, that's the plate on the.
Is referring, is referring to any, anything that happens during, come on.
Hi. Michelle Bouchard, Conservation Commission. If this would help just to address or clarify a couple of things about what came up before conservation? And what does fall into our purview? What we heard at the last couple of meetings? What we did address on Tuesday um and what we uh knew was coming before you. So feel free to ask any questions, but just to talk about a couple of things. What falls within our purview is what is within the hundred foot buffer zone of the wetlands. And that is in uh what is uh lot one is what is within the buffer zone, so we addressed that. And um the drainage on lot one. We did talk about um the concerns around the expansion of the roadway and the safety for fire. That is outside of commission's uh purview. We did talk about the safety issues and the concerns uh for the town and for the fire um department. Uh and while we support and we did ask about the plate and the plate removal. The expansion of the road and the concerns about drainage and the increased impervious area. That space of the road is outside of conservation's purview. Um and so there's nothing more that we can do. What we did vote on, on Tuesday is an order of conditions. Um and we did provide those, we did hold those, we did not sign the order of conditions um until planning board did approve uh as of tonight. So our order of conditions was approval based on the plans and the drainage for lot one. Because that is all that does officially fall under the purview of Conservation Commission.
And when you say purview, you mean that's the only part that falls within wetlands?
Within wetlands and within the border, the vegetative wetlands um and the buffer zone. And there is nothing more that we currently have jurisdiction over. If the scope of work does change or there are concerns that when they are raised to conservation does fall under our jurisdiction, we would be happy to bring that up and reconsider it, but currently as the project has been presented, nothing else falls within our jurisdiction, so we're happy to review and continue to um entertain talks with the abutters and help educate and, and um provide uh context and um conversation, but nothing else falls within the jurisdiction of conservation at this moment.
All right.
So where that turn is, is.
It's outside of our purview.
It's outside of the hundred foot, okay.
It is, it is, yeah, and um well, paving versus gravel would be the greater public safety. Having, and having an island or no island from a drainage would be a zero sum. Because you'd need water if there was an island, no water if there wasn't. But it's outside of our purview at this, at this time. So I hope that's helpful if you have any questions.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions at this time? No, all right. Would we like to close the public hearing and uh work on drafting the order of conditions? If somebody would like to make that motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to uh close the public hearing for Pinecrest Village and uh.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so at this point, we're going to work on those conditions.
So if we need them to change the drawing and add the waivers, do we have to continue?
Yep, we'll have to continue just to review the.
Yeah, you would, it would be the safest thing.
So we'll continue to review the conditions and revise any revisions to the plans.
So are we going to have them remove the island?
Yes.
I think that was the determination, I.
Just want to make sure because that was the.
That's what I have noted.
That was the only one change in the waiver, so just.
Yeah, I have yes for the waiver for the, you know, the island.
Just give you clear sight of what we're, what you're doing in the next set of drawings.
Yep.
The last one, I guess.
Remove the, remove the island, but also keep the signs.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's a condition of the fire department for the, so yeah, that would be a condition.
That's what I have, yep. All right.
Okay. So what, so our next meeting is actually, it's full of public hearings. If, no, gosh, November fourteenth is also the right now.
Well, this, the public hearing's closed, so wouldn't this just be?
Conditions?
It would just be you, your board deliberating over the conditions and then making sure that the proper notations are on the plan.
All right, so October twenty-fourth?
Two weeks.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
You said November twenty-fourth?
No, October.
October, oh, yeah, okay.
All right, so would you like to make that?
Make a motion to continue uh Pinecrest Village um to, was it October twenty-fourth?
Correct.
Second thought?
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number two. We have a public hearing, site plan review, two four Bedford Street, uh which have been continued to this evening upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by Twin Boys LLC for proposed contractor base presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers, possible vote. We do have a request for continuance to our October twenty-fourth meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue the uh two bed, two four Bedford Street to October twenty-fourth.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Agenda item number three is a conceptual subdivision plan for sixty-four Lakeside Ave presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Yeah, wait, no.
Madam Chair may be leaving.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I'll be back.
See you in November.
Oh, do we need, is this who we have for Stowe Estates, she was a state of state?
No, I think we got her.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we discussed before. No, this, no, I'm glad you brought that up.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi, good evening, Jamie Bissonnet, Zenith Consulting Engineers, appreciate you guys meeting us.
Michael Mastrein, thank you for your time.
So Mike's the applicant. We, I've always brought subdivisions in prior to, to the planning board and discuss them when we're laying them out. To make sure that we're heading in the right path, get feedback early so that we're trying to minimize changes and headaches. Obviously, things are going to happen with reviews, drainage analysis, et cetera, but if I can get some upfront feedback, that's always appreciated. So that's what we're here for tonight is uh this is similar to what you looked at uh a couple of minutes ago. A two lot subdivision, there's a lot that is with a house on Lakeside Ave, but we're looking to create two new house lots. We're also looking to do a wavered subdivision, forty foot wide right of way with a reduced asphalt side size road. To create frontage for two new residential lots. Uh roadway uh would be roughly, uh well, the right of way would roughly be five hundred feet long, so well within the seven hundred and fifty foot maximum as allowed by the, the town. We've done definitive survey, we've done perks, we've had wetlands delineated, there's a small wetland that's connected because of a drainage culvert under the road to the, what we would call the northeast on this plan, but it's right up against Lakeside Ave. Besides that, there are no other resource areas on site. The four hundred foot mark from the pond is roughly here, you can see we label it as zone A, which is the uh four hundred foot to the surface water supply. So all of our septics would be more than enough to meet title five distance, drainage, same thing. All of these lots meet or exceed the seventy thousand square feet uh and the upland requirements as required by the town. They meet all zoning standards for frontage and setbacks and widths and everything else. So we will obviously be asking for some waivers to construct this. Um I think the tradition in, in Lakeville has always been with wavered roadways, uh they're going to remain private. So we understand that, uh we would be willing to discuss um the type of private way, way maintenance, whether it be form of association with a condo association or roadway maintenance agreement uh moving forward further on during the definitive process, but at this point, I'm just hoping to get some feedback if you're looking at the plan, if you see anything that sticks out or if, um if you can give Mike and I the nod to proceed forward. Obviously, the next step for Mike is quite expensive, uh so we want to make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Well, anybody on the board have any questions, comments, concerns at this point?
Oh, I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any major, any major issues just yet.
I'm assuming the waivers are going to be sidewalks.
Yeah, this would be pavement width, streetlights, sidewalks. All of the items that are needed to kind of keep the cost of a roadway reasonable so that two lots, so this becomes a feasible project.
And are you planning on burying, excuse me, burying the utilities?
Um underground utilities out here.
You tell me.
We, we would, we would probably go with underground electric cable telephone. Uh I mean aesthetically, um his daughter lives in the house out front, I think from an aesthetic standpoint, I think that would be appreciated.
Pretty, yeah.
Yeah, and I know.
Pretty wooded too, it's probably safer anyways in the storms.
Exactly.
Yep, so that, that probably, we probably won't be asking for that waiver.
Yeah, um.
Oh, and this is a mass DOT road, so we'll have mass highway to comply with this law.
No, that's forty-five, forty, yeah, that's why it's kind of curving.
It is an island, yeah, they're going to, so yeah, you.
You're going to do an island?
An island in the middle?
Well, you know, tonight's the first night that I've, I've heard discussion of not having the island. I know, um I live on a newer subdivision in town, we have an island, it's actually quite nice. This is actually a full-size cul-de-sac and so the, the pavement around it, we have it twenty feet, which is suitable in this situation, but we're, we're not necessarily opposed to it. I think the aesthetic of having greenery and having a tree or even potentially using it for stormwater mitigation is a nice, um a nice touch. But that being said, um if the board is adamant that they don't want it for some reason, then I think.
No, I mean, that was a special case because of the request by the fire department, you know, and again, it's that one, I, I think the trees would, they probably would have been better in the middle because it would have blocked it, but that, the other house is so high, I don't think it would have mattered anyways, it wasn't like they were going to look out into it anyways, but you mean, I don't.
And, and you said it's going to be a full size, so that's the one forty?
So the, the diameter, the outer diameter is going to be the full size?
Yeah.
So the inner would be.
That was the problem.
Be smaller, yeah, the other one was, they needed, but.
Oh, they reduced the diameter?
They did.
Yeah, no, we, we would be looking to do the full-size diameter.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a hundred and forty, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um.
I mean, from my standpoint.
Is, is, is the reason the uh, the cut from Lakeside is down that far, is, is, is it you need that uh, uh to make lot three the seventy thousand square feet?
No, sir, the, so I see, it, the lot three has, actually has ample, what we were trying to do with that, that jog around is two things. We're trying to avoid the culvert and the wetlands to the northeast uh up in this corner.
Okay, yeah, the wetlands.
Okay, and then the other part that we're doing is Mike, not knowing he was going to go through this process, has spent an absurd sum of money on a beautiful shed that he has got yet for his, for his daughter. And so um we're trying to adhere to the setbacks of that shed, it's on a nice slab, it's really well done, so.
If I can move it, it would be great, but I'd have to.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, if anything, I was, I was kind of indicating the.
Going up north.
To, to, to moving it that way, but yeah, if you've got a uh.
Yeah, they got the wetlands.
If, if you got a wetlands area there, you know, then I, I, I understand it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no.
I.
Major concerns?
Yeah, no.
Great, thank you, we appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Do you need Mr. Brown?
No, I don't.
All right. We have agenda item number four, Stowe Estates approved surety and release final lot possible vote. Good evening.
Hey, Janir, six Sam Chapeline, Lakeville.
So we have received your surety, it's been sent to town council. We have not heard back from them. Uh but we did, I did ask uh council prior to the meeting um if we could contingently approve based on pending approval.
Okay.
So she said that we can do that. As long as this board's in agreement. We can approve the surety, release the final lot contingent on the approval from town council of the surety. So if, did you have any further questions or?
So she still needs to review it?
Yes, it's been.
You would sign next week, is that how that would work?
So you could sign it tonight, but I couldn't have it notarized?
Till I have that approval.
Yeah, okay.
So would someone like to make that?
Most of what? How do you want to word it? Um, I'll make a, what is it?
Approval of the surety to release the final lot contingent on town council.
Yeah, I went above a little bit more than what EP's estimate came back with.
Okay.
So my estimate, which is the same company that did the base coat, call it forty-seven thousand, EP came back fifty-seven whatever.
Okay.
So I brought the bond to sixty.
Okay.
Okay. I thought in my head it was a lot lower and I was like, I thought they were like half and a half in my head.
As close as they were because I mean, normal towns would go higher.
A little bit more conservative.
Conservative, but it's the same TL Edwards that did the first coat, so. They got what they're going to charge me and.
Yeah.
You know, so we're, we're close.
So as long as council approves?
Okay.
Then you'll, you'll be able to get it notarized, if not, then I guess you'll have to come back.
Can I ask one question in regards to sidewalks, so I listened to two subdivisions similar to mine, not distance-wise, but house-wise. So what is the, the, the rule of thumb on when sidewalks are needed in new private roads? As far as quantity of houses goes?
So the, so I, I know that your subdivision is on a, a busy road with, and it's actually getting widened, adding sidewalks and in a large portion of it, that's the.
When, when is that starting?
Fall of twenty, I forget if it's twenty-five or twenty-six, it keeps, it keeps getting.
I, I don't know if it's going that far down though.
So it may not be, but just because it's not going down there yet doesn't mean it won't continue? Because I believe it is going through Taunton as well.
Because I think it's, was that Andrews Street, if I'm not mistaken, if you're coming from the Lakeville side, that I think it's going to stop, but.
It's, and it's changed, it's also, I know that.
So the theory is that because. So, the theory is that because sidewalks could get to me, that's why I need to put one in?
So, for example, this one that we just recently approved, they already have an existing, like, area for the mailboxes as well as waiting for the buses. So, the cars can actually pull in and wait for the buses with the children instead of having the kids waiting on the side of the, the street.
Okay.
So, for me, it was, this is a busy street, Route seventy-nine, with highway access. It's getting widened, it's getting sidewalks added. My, I hate to think, we, planning board has to be concerned with safety. I hate to think of children waiting out, especially when we get dark, you know, coming into the winter months, waiting out without a streetlight because we do always typically wave the streetlights and we allow the, the end of driveway lanterns instead because it's more compliant with our Night Sky Bylaw. So, for me, it's a safety concern, is the children waiting out on the side of the street without a place to stand.
The, the previous one you heard, the first one was a smaller, you know, again, a smaller subdivision, but it was flooding out to, uh, I guess.
An existing.
Existing, you know, miles of existing private ways.
Right, right.
So, it wasn't like they weren't, the sidewalks wouldn't, would literally go nowhere. Your, actually, the sidewalks for yours was going out to a main road, so they had a place to stand. This one, sidewalks would stop, but they still have to walk a mile on the side, on the road.
And the road that's on, um, Howland Road, that's a new street being built, which I think was approved way before this board has no sidewalks as well. I'm not arguing that I wanna take them away, I'm just, for my next project, I wanna understand.
So, just so you're aware, so we, so our rules and regulations, they hadn't been updated in quite a long time. And what we actually just, uh, got confirmation of a grant to actually do a deep dive into the rules and regulations. What we wanna do is have a tiered structure so that, um, private roads have certain, uh, standards that they have to adhere to and then, um, roads that potentially wanna be accepted by town meeting will have other standards. I think we would potentially still allow certain wiggle room because if, maybe it makes sense for one situation and not for another. But I think we, we have, we try to look at it with not just the wide lens, but the, also the individual lens too. So, hopefully when those rules and regulations are being done, it'll be more.
It's not, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't personally on you, you know what I'm saying, it wasn't, you were just, yeah, it wasn't.
I get it, so when I hear two other ones, they don't even, I'm like, well, they got two, I only got three. So, the traffic on my road is very minimal.
And the, so the other one?
My thought is, well, if you don't know your neighbors, to tell them to slow down if it's a safety concern, like.
Yeah.
I, I think you should be able to figure out the two cars that may drive by you every day, you know? Because it's not a pass-through subdivision and it's, again, three houses. But I get your point, it's going up to seventy-nine.
Yes, that was my concern, because of the, the ma, it, it's a major road in Lakeville. And, and then the other one we just looked at with Jamie, um, that's also a subdivision.
We're not saying that we're going to, but we, I'm just, I just looked at it and said, these are the, based on what you're showing, probably these are the waivers and we've, yeah.
That we typically see, but, and that was another case of a subdivision off of a subdivision.
Yeah.
No problem. Okay.
All right, so.
We're.
We're waiting for that mo.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the surety to release the, the third lot contingent on town council approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll add just one last thing, so if the bond needs to be changed wording-wise or whatever, I can make that happen.
Okay.
Since it was no standard of how I was supposed to present it, I guess. So, if she does have some tweaks, then I'll call the insurance agent and we'll.
Okay.
I didn't have any guidelines to go off of, so I said, you gotta give me what you've done for other towns that are same exact road bonds and that's what we came up with, so.
That's another thing we are working on, those forms, getting those.
All good?
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
So, we, you have that, we can sign that tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, agenda item number five, public hearing, site plan review, forty-three Main Street. It has been continued to this evening upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by John O'Leary for the proposed development of One Gate Residences. It will include a hundred and twenty units of assisted living and memory care and seventy units of independent living with associated site improvements, parking area, landscape improvements, and stormwater infrastructure. Uh, we do have a request to continue, um, because our next meeting is going to be full of public hearings for town, uh, meeting items. I think we should continue this to our next, the following meeting, which would be November fourteenth. I did check with town council, she said that it is okay to, uh, push it back to that next meeting. Expecting that this is gonna be a heavy.
Yeah.
When they do, when they do finally come in, that we're gonna have a full, uh, meeting schedule.
It's gonna be one we're gonna have to do at the, uh, library?
I, I believe so, we'll still.
So, I do have the library booked, so that would be your choice if you wanted to have it there.
Yeah, we might as well.
I mean, it was a little, yeah, I don't know if they're doing another presentation, we can get, we can set up a little differently.
Oh, that's right, was it?
Because we had, we had to like, we had to go off to the side, which is fine, I don't know if they're doing a presentation or not.
I would think they would probably just go on through all the review, the engineer review.
All right. I mean, sometimes they do a PowerPoint. But, I mean, even if we do it.
There, there were a lot of people last time.
Yeah.
They, they brought a lot of people.
True.
So, they, they brought, at least, I think they had like, at least six, seven people. So, I'm fine doing it there, yeah, just before I give the motion.
Right, yeah, I think that the library is good, since we already have it booked and we've been planning.
Changed it up a little bit.
Yeah, and that way if, yeah, somebody else has already scheduled this meeting, we don't, this room, we don't know.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, just both.
I have it scheduled, I'll just release that one, though.
All right.
If we go there, just make sure that they know, just, I mean, I guess we could do it, I don't think there was anything crazy, we just had to put the screen down. But, yeah, okay.
All right.
So, I'll make a motion to continue the forty-three Main Street, uh, to November fourteenth at the public library.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda item number six, public hearing, site plan review, forty-three Main Street, which has continued to this evening upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by John O'Leary for the proposed development of the Fox Estates. Fifty-five-plus age-qualified cottage home development, it will include sixty-eight units across twenty-six cottages, ten duplexes, sixteen triplex, and a five thousand plus or minus square foot clubhouse and a two thousand plus or minus square foot wastewater treatment plant, which will service the entire master planned redevelopment of the former state hospital site. Also proposed is a community amenity space, associated site improvements, new roadway, parking area, landscape improvements, and stormwater infrastructure. We have a request to continue, uh, this one as well, I'd say to November fourteenth.
I move that we continue public hearing for, uh, forty-three Main Street, uh, the, uh, Fox Estates, uh, until, uh, November fourteenth.
We have the library, we have a motion.
Second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item number seven, approve the August eighth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes. Was just one item, did everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
Yep.
I do not have any changes.
I didn't either.
The only thing I saw was on, where, on page two, where, second paragraph to the bottom, boards including Health, Fire, and Concom. Should we have, should it be spelled out Conservation Commission to ward confusion, or is that?
That's fine, I can read that.
Does it matter? I'm not sure if it matters extensively, but maybe just because it's a, I'm sure that's how he said it, but just for clarity's sake. That's the only edit that I had. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes with that one edit?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, agenda item number eight, review the following zoning board of appeals petition. Corrin, twenty-one Anaconda Drive. This is another residential, looking for residential zoned item where they're looking to place a shed within a setback. Typically, with these items, we send a memo of no comment to zoning board. Unless anyone has any questions, comments, concerns?
It's in the well setback, I don't think it's a, yeah, no comment.
Right, yeah, I'm sure they have a certain way of handling that.
Yeah, I think.
And I don't know if it's drawn to scale.
No, it's not, I mean, I think it, I thought there was another drawing that showed it, like, and then we called it out differently. Um, yeah, and they're, they're in only thirty-three feet in some areas. So.
Right, I think that's because, yeah, it's a corner. Lots, so.
It's a, yeah, a corner lot without a corner.
Odd shape, yeah. They have to be away from the septic, so I don't know. All right, so, make a motion to have, send no comment back to zoning board of DBA, right?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, administrative update, Form F, ratify vote. Kathy, would you like to? Do you have anything to say? It's basically what we've done before, the Form F.
Yep.
We're just ratifying that vote?
Just ratifying that vote.
Okay, so, it's properly on the agenda, so we can, uh, ratify the vote for the Form F that we had previously taken that was not on the agenda. So, if someone would like to motion to ratify.
I'll make a motion to ratify the vote for Form F.
We have a motion in a second. I'm not sure if we got that one. Kathy can guess. Uh, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And number two, A and R, discuss request to waive fee possible vote. So, I think you had this as a request to waive the fee for an A and R?
Yeah, it was for Derek Maxey. I guess that when they did the Form C, it wasn't included. So, the Board of Assessors is asking those lots to be included on that. So, he's asking to, nothing else is changing just because it wasn't included. I, I thought I printed the email, but I didn't. So, he's asking if you'll waive the, that fee.
How much is the fee?
I think it's five hundred dollars.
So, when was this, when was this done? Do you know, do you remember? Is this like a while ago that it happened? Because we haven't done anything recently.
No, it was the, the Form C for the golf course. So, I, I think it was the lots weren't shown on that, I'm not, I, I don't recall exactly what that, but it had to do with that. It wasn't done correctly, yes.
So, we're going back to like a public hearing that we held like two years ago? Or a year and a half?
Yeah. It was, yeah.
It was a while ago. But so, the assessors are asking for a proper, proper form?
Proper Form A.
That they didn't submit?
Yes. I guess they did submit it, but like I said, I don't exactly, I thought I had printed the email, I must've missed that one this week, a little crazy.
So, I mean, did they pay a fee originally?
Originally, yes.
They did pay a fee?
Yes.
For, for that lot that they're looking for the A and R?
Yeah.
So, they did already pay the fee?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so now the Board of Assessors is looking for it again?
So, they just want the form?
Just to be clear, I don't know, something on the form, like I said, I'm, I apologize, I did not think to print that up.
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure I understand what the ask is and what the reasoning is because I don't. Uh, like, I wasn't sure what it was pertaining to because the last thing that we had was, uh, that Lloyd Gessner and.
Yeah, I should've just sent that around, I just, as you can see, it was at the very end of the revisions, so that, I kinda just got to that.
As long as we're not giving back money.
No, not giving back.
As long as we're not charging him for it either, because I, you know, I don't wanna not charge him for an A and R if, if he should've been charged for it, but if he did pay the fee.
Originally charged, yes.
He was originally charged, okay. So, that, to me, is what makes the difference.
So, he's resubmitting, he's resubmitting the form again, is what it is?
Yes.
And he's wa, he's looking to waive the fee because he already paid that?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not really waiving the fee, it's just he paid it.
Formality. Yeah.
Kind of, yeah.
Acknowledged that, that was there.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm not really on board with waiving fees, but.
No, yeah, yeah.
This sounds like.
He paid it and, yeah.
As long as it's been paid.
It's fine.
Okay, so, um, I guess we'll have to take a vote on that?
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion to waive the A and R fee for.
Didn't say.
It's a Form A for.
Form A, for A.
Okay.
For Lakeville Country Club, which is thirty-four Clear Pond, or forty?
Forty.
Forty Clear Pond?
Yeah.
Right, wasn't?
I don't remember.
Hold on.
You think I remember?
Hold my motion.
Yeah.
Forty-four Clear Pond?
Forty-four.
Okay.
Right, that was that one, right? We were doing that subdivision?
Yeah, it's all, like, the Lakeville Country Club, it has one address, so.
Different subdivision for the Golfers Way, right? Forty-four Clear Pond Road?
Right.
Derek, Derek Maxey, okay. Make a motion to waive the fee for the A and R Form A for forty-four Clear Pond.
Second.
Discussion, real quick, just as a formality only, we're not waiving the fee. Uh, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Our next meeting will be October twenty.
Oh, I just had one more thing, an update. So, we've been working on the zoning amendments for town meeting and I, I had asked Amy about this because normally there would be a letter from the planning board to the select board, ask, saying, you know, you would like to play, have these placed on the warrant. And then the selectman would respond with a letter saying, have a public hearing. So, it was kinda more casual this time, so I'm just asking if it'd be okay if I could submit that letter for the record so they could submit their letter for the record and those are included in the evidence that goes to the AG.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a formality, but it's, it is important.
Yep.
That was it.
Okay, our next meeting, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, Lakeville Police Station. Any other business? Hearing none.
Nope.
Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.